Let's go, man.
All right. Well, just first, why did you decide to run? How did you decide to run? How'd that all come about for you?
Well, it really started, I would say, close to three years ago. My daughter, my oldest daughter Stella, who's a senior at Auburn now, she was in the inaugural class of Leadership HT at the high school. And I was seeing a dinner with her one day and she was talking about all the great service products, projects they were going through and presenting. And I was just amazed at all the ideas that the students came up with, what she came up with. And, you know, we just got to talking about service in the community and she really put me on the spot. She was like, Dad, you know, you're a great problem solver, but you know, what do you really do in the community? What do you do to serve the community? And that conversation really, you know, stuck with me. I'm like, you know, I've been, you know, I've had a very successful professional career, but I've really never reached out into the Molocle community, even though I've lived in Trustful for 36 years, you know, to really serve in the community. And, you know, for a long time I was like, well, how can, you know, like I said, it really affected me. And I thought about it a while and I talked to my wife Lynn about it several times. And, you know, it sort of went along time and then all of a sudden there was a school board position that came open that got filled two years ago. And my wife said, hey, why don't you apply for the school board position? You know, she said, you're a great problem solver, you know, our school at that time needed some problems to be solved. And I said, sure, why not? So I put the application in, got selected to interview with the committee and had a great time at the interview. Got to know those who participated very well, but unfortunately was not selected. So, you know, I sort of have a motto, either going to win or learn. So I reached out to, you know, some of those who are participating, like, you know, what, what can I do to serve the community? How can I help? You know, I'd love to serve on a board. And they said, well, we've got this program called Leadership Trustful that you really need to apply for. So I just reached out, looked it up, applied for it, got accepted into that program. And, you know, what amazing program, you know, for someone who's lived in Trustful so long, just to see how the city works and, you know, get to meet so many great people who live in the city that I have not met before. So I really attribute a lot of, you know, my experience and learning to that program and coming out of that program. Shortly after that, I got appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I've been on there for a little bit, almost a year now, I believe. And that has been an amazing experience for me just to learn really the ins and outs of how, you know, government works from that perspective. And then, you know, one behold, you know, as I moved through that process, I'm like, I really want to do more. You know, what else can I do? And then, you know, as everything started to come about here in the last few months, you know, I started going back to that problem solving mentality I have and started talking to people in my, you know, Trustful Leadership Group, started talking to some other friends and like, hey, you know, you should really run for council, you know, you should give it a shot. And so I had tossed it around probably for a good month or so before I finally announced and threw my hat in the ring to run for place two. So it's really, that's a very long answer to an easy question, but it really has been sort of a journey for me. You know, going back from that conversation with my oldest daughter Stella.
Yeah, no, that's cool. Did, uh, I'm trying to remember because the last, last week or two especially has been kind of a blur with all this stuff. Did, did you announce after Alan pulled out or before?
Um, it, you know, the time there is very tight, but it was actually, it was very close. So I had attended one of the events here in town. And, uh, you know, at that event, I really just sort of made a public announcement that I was running for place two. And so I had not made an announcement online or through Facebook, but really just at that event, I was like, you know, if I'm going to do this, I need to do it. This is a great place to announce it. And there were some other candidates who are already there and already spoken. So like, you know, I'm just going to announce my candidacy right here and, you know, off to the races we go.
Did you have like, even though you had that three years of buildup, did you have plans going into that night to be like, I'm doing this tonight? Or was it kind of like, you felt it in the moment and you're like, I'm in?
It was more like the latter. I felt that at the moment. My, my wife and I have been talking about it for some time and weighing it back and forth. And, and I basically just, you know, reached over to her and I said, he's over to said, well, here we go. It's now or never. And so I just made an on the spot decision like, I'm going to jump in this. I see the opportunity, um, you know, and I had actually spoken to the council a couple of days before that on the garbage issue and made some suggestions and got a lot of good feedback from that. And I think that sort of just pushed me into it.
Okay. Did you ever, even before you had that conversation with your daughter, did you ever think you would participate in city government?
Absolutely not. So, uh, you know, not at this level, you know, I'd really been interested in serving the community. Uh, you know, I did say that was something I wanted to do more of and was trying to find a way to do it. But I think just as, as time went on and as I got exposed to more and more of the city government, what a great place we have, you know, just how many people are required to make the city run. And I think that was one thing at going through Leadership Trustful, you know, we got to act. We go to the library, we go to the seniors and you just, it's hard to find them. How many people, uh, you know, serve in that capacity, you know, to make the different, you know, benefits and amenities of our city run to serve other people. And I decided I want to be a part of that. I didn't think it would be this far, but, uh, you know, I think based on my skillset, my problem solving abilities, uh, you know, I believe this is the place for me.
So, yeah, no, you're right about Leadership Trustful. I haven't gone through the class, but I've been a part of y'all's different events that y'all have come to, whether it be, uh, at the historical museum, doing some presentation stuff, stuff like that. And always at the end, you always get those people who are like, I didn't realize how much actually went on kind of behind the scenes, so to speak.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
There's a lot, there is a lot. So what, what is your, your, your job? What's the, what's the problem solving? What problems are you solving?
Uh, you know, I think if just looking over the arc of my career, uh, you know, a lot of the problems have been financially related. And a lot of it has been, uh, especially early on, just asking questions. I'm asking tough questions. Uh, you know, one of the first roles I had, um, you know, was a, an analytical, but also an accounting role. And, uh, you know, we did month and close and close the books. And, you know, I was always asked questions like, hey, why are we doing this? Why are we doing that? And, and, you know, a lot of people weren't questioning anything, but as I started unraveling some of the questions, you know, we started uncovering problems and uncovering solutions to those problems. So, uh, so a lot of it has been, uh, you know, in the beginning financially for me. Uh, you know, using my accounting background, my financial skills, my problem solving skills to really dig into numbers, look at the details, ask questions, really a lot of times like, why are we doing this and do we need to do this? And so that's where a lot of it started. Now, over, over time, I have transitioned into more of a technical role. So I'm currently the CEO of Abic Technologies. We are a technology service provider. So my problem shifted from, you know, pen and paper to more technical, more complex project management, to solving technology problems. Uh, when it came to, you know, network infrastructure, I do a lot with cybersecurity. Um, I do a lot with business intelligence and data. I'm starting to get into artificial intelligence quite a bit. So, you know, what started as more of that financial side, you know, really moved over as my career spun on to more that technical ability, but I still rely heavily on that financial side. I mean, I run a business, um, and, you know, we have to, you know, maintain our own budget. We have to maintain our own financial statements, our own financial health. So I still rely on that a lot, but, uh, you know, really financial is where it started. But now, you know, I've merged that so much with this, the technical aspect of business and the technical aspect of, of, you know, anything that I can use technology and financial to solve a problem.
I got you. How scary is artificial intelligence to you?
I'm not scared of it at all. I've done a lot of presentations on artificial intelligence to a lot of different industry groups. Uh, you know, I spoke at the Alabama Law Conference last year. I've spoken to Louisiana CPA group, an industry conference in New Orleans. And, uh, you know, I try, really try to spin it as, hey, this is a technology that can really help us out. Um, it can really make our lives more efficient. Uh, it's something you need to learn to work with. Um, it is going to help. I mean, we're all facing labor crises in the business world and I'm sure the government world as well, but you know, how can it serve you to make your life easier? So I'm not really scared of it at all. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, I would say it gets a bad rap, but it's very powerful and I think it's really going to be a huge asset to all types of organizations, including municipal governments in the future.
Yeah, I've, I used it, uh, I was finishing up a book that's about to come out and I needed, it's, it's lots and lots of pages and I was having to do the references section for my book, which takes, it can take, it feels like it can take almost as long as writing the actual book because you're, you're going back through and then everything's got to be a certain style. And I used, I used some AI to scan my manuscript, pull out every reference that I made to this newspaper or, or that document, that kind of thing. And just give me a list of it and then I'll format it. I just wanted it to bring all those out to me. And I don't know the amount of time that I saved by doing that. My book comes out July 8th. If I hadn't been able to do that, it would probably be September 8th, like.
Yeah. That is exactly the use case we're seeing play across multiple industries right now that we're, you know, we, I've been talking to a lot of clients with that and, and I use it myself, of course, uh, you know, as much as I can. Uh, but yeah, I mean, you're experiencing, I think, what a lot of people are experiencing. Hey, it's very powerful. It saves a lot of time in certain use cases. So, uh, but excited to be, to be part of, you know, a lot of different groups that are looking at AI right now in business and across different organizations.
For sure. Do you think your, your particular expertise in the, the career fields that you've been in, does that, does that help running especially now with the challenges that have obviously come to light in Trustful?
Yeah, I think it does. And in a couple of examples I can give you, one, obviously the financial side of what I do. Uh, you know, I can read the numbers. Um, I understand, uh, financial accounting. I understand governmental accounting. Uh, you know, it is different, uh, in how it works from a business. And I do understand that and fund accounting. So, you know, being able to understand how finances are put together, how budgets are put together. I think that would be extremely helpful and what we will need to accomplish in, in the city. Um, also think, you know, the, the technical background is important. I think in a lot of ways, like you mentioned, you know, with looking at documents and being more efficient as we go through contracts. I think we can use, use technology to help us understand that better. Uh, maybe help bring information to light a lot quicker. Uh, but also, you know, where else can, you know, technology be used to bring efficiency to the forefront? Uh, you know, that's one reason, which one huge application we see technology is, is, uh, you know, making sure we, we can bring data to the forefront to make decisions. And I'm really hoping, you know, if, you know, the people of Trustful, you know, choose me, you know, to serve them in this role uh, and, you know, give me permission to do so, then maybe I can take some of my data, Linux data, Linux background, my financial background and hopefully, you know, look through the data and really help push forward some decisions that are data driven. Uh, not just decisions that, hey, this is all what we've always done. Our decisions like, hey, from the gut, that, that sounds like the right thing to do, but really look at the data and be able to use that to make a decision.
Yeah. Well, apparently as of right now, as of this recording, you're unopposed. So we'll see how much changes between now and June 24th. But if we know anything, it's that some wrench will be thrown at some point because that's just been this election cycle.
Yes, and I'm fully expecting that. So, and preparing for it. So I would be extremely surprised if I can come out, uh, out of the qualifying period unopposed. So I'm, I'm, I'm keeping the pedal down. Uh, I'm not going to, I'm not going to let up because of that. So, uh, I'm going to do, I got, I'm going to have some videos I'm going to be releasing on my Facebook page. I am planning to do some meet and greets and, uh, and work with some other candidates to do, do some other events, you know, to help the residents get out and meet who we are and get to learn and ask questions. I really encourage them all to ask questions. A lot of people ask, have reached out to me and I'm like, hey, go to the meet and greets, you know, learn who the, learn who the candidates are, ask the questions. Uh, you know, those are the best ways for you to get to know them. Uh, but yeah, we'll, we'll see. Qualifying begins here next week. Um, it'll end a couple of weeks after that. So the field will be set at that point. And, uh, and like I said, I'm, I'm going to use it to my advantage right now.
Are you one, and feel free just to say no comment, it's not gonna, it's not gonna offend me at all. Are you one that's like, because you've announced and you've announced your place and all that, most have. Are you, June 10th, you're walking in and qualifying or are you going to like, kind of wait near the end of it? Is there any strategy in that at all?
You know, yeah, some, some of this, uh, political maneuvering, like that's very new to me. So I've gotten, hey, walk in at four o'clock at the last minute and qualify just to see what happens. Or, hey, you want to put your name in the hat, you know, day one? And I've talked to some other candidates and, and they're doing one or the other. So I think it's going to, it's going to vary. Like you said, it's, you know, I think it's going to be an even wilder two weeks. We're probably going to see it pink just a little bit. Uh, as, as, you know, Leslie still has an announcement place, she's going to be out. We've got some other people who have sort of settled into what place, but, um, that doesn't mean it's going to stay that way.
Yeah, I think we're all ready for August 27th regardless of what happens August 26th.
Absolutely.
Man, what, uh, so you mentioned problem solving several times, like just take, uh, we'll just take, we'll just take the garbage thing.
Yeah.
What, you mentioned you, you've talked to some of the councils, some ideas, that kind of thing. How, how do you view that? How do you approach that from that problem solving skillset?
Well, I think, you know, I went before the council at the, uh, I think it was the last month's meeting, uh, you know, just to really make some suggestions, uh, because, uh, I had looked over the amendment that was published by the Tribune. Uh, I had a lot of questions because it was just an amendment. It was not the full contract. And as I looked through that, you know, it seemed like we were just really, you know, just going on the road of one solution. Hey, we're just going to pass this on to, you know, the people of Trustful. They're going to pick up the tab for it. And, you know, I know from my own history and my own experience, there's a lot of ways to solve a problem. And, you know, in a lot of ways I was like, man, there's got to be something better. You know, there's got to be something where, uh, you know, we can either share this responsibility or there's got to be a place where it could be sunset at some point. So I made a lot of suggestions to the council that night, you know, and some of it was just based on the information I had in front of me. And, and also understanding the accountability of, you know, the company providing the service. Uh, because I mean, I said this and sort of in my comments is, hey, if, if they, if they did decide, you know, to pass this fee on to the people of Trustful, it's not just the city's contract at that same point. It's my contract. It's the people's contract. And, you know, if we're going to be asked to pay a fee for garbage pickup, then we need to make sure that, uh, you know, we get the service we expect and there's some accountability to those providing the service. Because, um, you know, sometimes garbage collections, you know, a little bit sketchy. We don't know, you know, you know, sometimes they miss and there needs to be some accountability there. But I'll say, you know, since, uh, you know, looking at the full contract, you know, I don't, I was sort of disappointed. I didn't know how much really negotiation was really going on. But I also know that, uh, you know, I would have liked to see more transparency of like, okay, here's some other areas we're looking at to try to make up this gap in the general fund.
Right.
And, and I really think, uh, I would, I would much rather, you know, if I'm not in the hot seat, Gary, you know, I'm up there. So it's hard to make it, it's easy to sit from this position and, and sort of armchair quarterback the situation. But, but God, I would probably dig in as, as many places I could, you know, you know, among the transactions and services in that general fund to find, how are we, do we have or done it contracts? So we have or done the services? Do we have or done the positions? I mean, you know, a lot of the things that we apply in business apply to the city as well, especially if not context. So I think, you know, I would like to see the city exhaust all possible options, uh, you know, before they decide to go to the people and, uh, you know, and apply this, this fee. Um, and even if they did, as I suggest in city council, I'd love to see them, you know, phase in over time. Uh, you know, it's like, hey, decisions were made. We understand that. Um, you know, the general fund was depleted, you know, to a deficit. Uh, but I don't think you can go to people and expect them to take on the entire responsibility immediately. Uh, you know, hey, phase it in, have, have good exemptions for those on fixed income. I mean, we've got a lot of people still over 65 in Trustful. Uh, you know, look at those exemptions hard and, and try to figure out a way to make it more palatable, but also have an ending to it. Hey, we're going to revisit this in a couple of years. I think of all the things that really disappointed me out that the current contract, it was the 10 year term.
10 years.
And I'm like, 10 years is a long time. It doesn't matter in what industry you're in, that is a long time. A lot, a lot of things can change. And I'd really like to have seen them go, hey, this is going to be a three year term or two year term. And, you know, maybe we'll, we'll look at it again, but, but I'll, you know, those are sort of my thoughts. And those are some of the same ones I shared at the city council meeting that night.
Yeah. How do you, you mentioned the word transparency at one point. How, how do you feel like, because I've always said this, not just this administration, but past administrations that I've covered as well. I've always thought comparatively, like to some other cities around, that Trustful's been a little bit behind in transparency and communication. But at the same time, I've sat at dozens of city council meetings where it's me and the three old guys that always come and that's it, and the department heads, and that's it. And so there's also that level of you have to take an interest enough in your city to show up. But if you don't know about it either, you know, so it's kind of, there's some give and take there. But how do you kind of make sure that, that everybody's informed? Everybody knows what's going on, has a place to speak, that kind of thing?
Well, I love the fact that our city council is very open to allow people to come forward and speak. And, you know, that we do have a convention for them to come for the council to ask questions about certain things. But, uh, you know, to that point, it's hard to ask questions if you don't have all the information available to you. And, you know, one of the things that, uh, you know, one of the, the major pillars of my campaign is to, uh, not just increase transparency, but access to information, uh, access to the budgets, access to the financial, the audited financial statements, you know, access to, you know, to more detail about transactions, you know, and, and help our people understand this, how government finance works. And, and some will latch on to that, some won't, and I understand that and, and I get that. But I think one of the ways we can do that is maybe deliver it to them digitally where they can see it online. Uh, not everybody can get off work at five o'clock and make it to a six o'clock council meeting. It's just difficult to do. And, and a lot of times, uh, if they can see that information, you know, at their fingertips, I think that would be very helpful, especially through their mobile app or phone. And, and I say that, if you go out and look at, I believe it was the City of Estavia. Uh, they have an amazing, uh, app on their, on their website that allows you to see everything that's going on with the budget right there at your fingertips. Uh, it's not a PDF, you know, it's not a, a scanned document. You know, it is something that is integrated with the website. I'm sure it's attached to probably some kind of software they're using. But I would love to see Trustful have, you know, a lot more, or provide a lot more access to the, to, you know, citizens and residents, you know, about things that are going on in more plain English detail. I think that would help tremendously, but, you know, right now I would say it's hard to find stuff on the website. You know, unless you know how to use Google really well, uh, you know, it's hard to find things. You know, I can find all the budgets, but I can't find links to the budgets. Uh, you know, you can, you know, the audited financial statements are out there. So I, I think having those things made available to the residents would be, uh, you know, I think would help things go a lot smoother with dissemination of information. And, you know, because, uh, you know, we, uh, you know, get a lot of questions about, you know, different things that are being built around town and how that's funded. And I think, you know, getting information about that digitally online, just in a paragraph or so, would make, would make things go a lot easier, I think, for the council and for the city as well.
Totally agree. Like as quickly as you said, you think it was City of Estavia. I'm looking at their budget now. That's how it should be.
Exactly.
Like I'm scrolling, scrolling it now, their expenses, you know, the last day it was updated, all these things, their performance over the last five years, 2025 goals, all that stuff is here. And it should be that easy to find. I think the city that, that I looked at and this was, because I have, the thing I've always had an issue with is just, just in general, the posting of meetings, like just the, just the notices. And, you know, for a while it was like, oh, they put it up at the civic center or the library. Now, if you want to get it digitally, it's like you have to ask to be on an email list. As opposed to, as opposed to it just being like readily available on a website for anybody. Um, I think that's asinine personally to have to ask to be, you know, to have that there or to be emailed to you. Um, so Homewood, they publish all of theirs online ahead of the meeting. And it doesn't matter if it's city council, uh, in your case, planning and zoning, it's out there. In my case, historical board, it's out there. And I'm like, then you know, then you obviously then know when the meeting is, you know, the when, the where, and you know what they're going to talk about.
Yes, and I'm a hundred percent agree with that. Uh, that is one, uh, theme that I have really, as I've talked to people and residents in, in Trustful, that one theme I've found is like, hey, what's on the agenda? You know, what are you talking about? And, and I, I've sort of experienced that planning and zoning a little bit. I know we experienced the city council, some of, you know, sometimes the agenda does get posted online. Um, I think, uh, you know, some of the challenges, that agenda is not set very, you know, very quickly. Uh, but I think the city needs to have a better way to get that out there to people. And, and they're, you know, a really known and easy communication channel. Uh, but, you know, let's have communication guidelines. Hey, our agenda is going to be posted here. Uh, it's not going to be posted 20 different places. It's going to be posted here. Uh, it's either a city website, uh, maybe it's on social media, or maybe we use a platform where you post it one time and it goes to all the social media platforms. I mean, we have tools like that available to us to disseminate information.
I use them every day.
I'm, I'm sure, I'm starting to use them and learning to use them, but, uh, more effectively. But, I mean, we have all this technology available to help, you know, facilitate communication of city business. I just don't think we're taking advantage of it and I would like to see us take advantage of it in this next administration.
Totally agree. Been saying it, I used to say it about the school system, um, a little bit. That's, that's, I think that has improved.
Absolutely.
Especially in the last two and a half years. Um, and, but the city, I think, could, there's, there's a lot of room to catch up there for sure.
A hundred percent. And that's one thing that I want to focus on as a councilman is try to find ways to use my knowledge of technology, experience with technology and to find ways to help get this information, uh, in front of our residents a lot quicker and access a lot easier for them.
Yeah. What are some of the, uh, outside of the garbage? Uh, because that's, that's the, that's the big thing. Obviously the, the garbage being a part of a larger issue, which is the depleted general fund. But what, what are some of the, what are some of the big, um, priorities? Things you want to focus on, goals, that kind of thing?
Yeah. And, you know, one thing really has been, you know, as, as I've been on planning and zoning, uh, you know, I've learned a lot about that process, how it works. Um, I've always, I've also learned about some deficiencies that we have. Uh, and so I think, you know, you know, one thing I want to, I really want to push hard in my campaign is, is really thoughtful community planning. You know, let's be intentional about what we want in our community, where we want it. And, and that encompasses a lot of different things, Gary. I mean, from, from land use, uh, from, you know, what kind of businesses and amenities we want in, you know, in our community, you know, what type of active transportation pathways we want to encourage bicycling or walking. Uh, but we need to have more focus on thoughtful community planning. And I say community because, uh, you know, input from the community is important. And I've looked at other comprehensive plans, other cities have put together both in our region and beyond. And the community is always very involved with that. Uh, you know, you pull people out of the community, they're interested in, in enhancing it and allow them to help you sort of determine, hey, what do we need? Where do we want it? And, and let's put a plan together. And I think that's a theme across all the candidates really is we have to do more planning. Uh, you know, if we want to, you know, manage the growth we have. And, you know, we're trying to take steps on planning and zoning already, uh, to help, you know, put a better plan together and, and not just be reactive, because let's face it, I think a lot of the situation we're in right now is just reacting to what happens. Uh, you know, I don't, I don't think I have to reiterate that, but we've seen it just from the conversations and what's been, uh, talked about in the city council meetings, you know. So I really want to see more thoughtful community planning, uh, you know, involve in the community with it, find ways to get a more comprehensive plan together that, uh, you know, not, not just drives business and sales tax, but also is something that, you know, the community can enjoy and, you know, continue to make Trustful a great place to live. And I think we need community input on that as well.
You mentioned sales tax and like, like Trustful's, just like most communities are kind of largely funded through their sales tax and obviously the online stuff, you know, we all buy stuff on Amazon. But like, are there opportunities like to kind of, what's the word? Like diversify kind of how you take in city revenue that's not solely based on sales tax in the stores?
You know, that's a difficult question because when you look at revenue and, and how it's consumed by, you know, a, a city, you know, every, every dollar, every penny has to go to a certain spot. You know, and unfortunately we're really as a city tied to sales tax and our budget is very much tied to sales tax as well. And, uh, you know, uh, you know, sort of that reliance on self-tax is sort of what has got us in the position we are now. Uh, if you look at the trend in sales tax 23 to 24, it was pretty much flat at the state level. And you know, that filters down to us as well. Uh, if you look at the trend in self-tax twenty-three to twenty-four, it was pretty much flat at the state level and you know that filters down to us as well. Uh, so, you know, we're, we're gonna have to, you know, be very, very careful and, and really, adhere to, hey, as, as the trend of self-tax goes, that, that's sort of gonna determine our budget right now. Now, I know there's, there, there's definitely some talk about going down to Montgomery and, you know, fixing the online. Yeah. Who knows how long that'll take though? I mean, it's really hard to say, is that, is that a six month, a twelve month, or is that a two year? Uh, we really don't know. And, and so I think we, we're gonna have to really, uh, be real careful about, uh, you know, looking at trends in self-tax collection, look at trends in consumer sentiment, uh, consumer spending, because, you know, what we can do as a city, is, is really based on that, you know, as far as from an operating standpoint, when we think about what drives a general fund, that's a lot of it. Uh, so, uh, that's one thing I think we're gonna have to really honor going forward. Uh, defer, diversifying, I mean, there's a lot of different ways we can, you know, maybe take advantage of some other revenue. Uh, you know, impact fees has been talked a lot about and making sure that we can, uh, as, uh, new residential developments, you know, wanna come to Trustful, you know, they, they will, you know, have a fee to pay. Um, you know, to help offset the, you know, increase in, you know, fire coverage, police protection. Uh, you know, city and schools and all those things, you know, have to, to move up, to cover those residential areas. I think that's been looked at. And there are some legalities around that, how far you can push that. So we've gotta be careful there with that, but, um, you know, uh, there's definitely laws that, that can help us. Um, there's grants out there that can help us. So, I think we're gonna have to do some digging to, to, you know, diversify, you know, our, our sources of funding to get and to keep the city moving forward.
You mentioned you've been here thirty-plus years.
That's correct, yes.
Is this the, this feel like a weird like, turning point in a way for Trustful or something, or is it just, there are some issues now that just need to be resolved?
I, I, I don't think there's anything weird about it. I mean, we, we're, we're a, a growing city. And, you know, I've been part of, um, on my professional side, been, been part of some rapidly growing companies and you have to manage it. And, and that is a, is a lot harder than what you think. Uh, so, I mean, we're not going through any more growing pains than any other city has faced over its time. And, you know, you have to, you, there's a, there's a point where you evolve and you, you sort of, you have to, you know, really look at, look and make some changes and evolve, you know, who you are. Uh, as your business grows, you, you have to, uh, look at the infrastructure of your business. You gotta look at the admin staff. You gotta hire HR. There's all these things to do. I see it's no different. You know, as it grows, I mean, you've got to find a way to manage that growth. And I think that's, that's where we're at right now, is, uh, we're, we're sort of a little bit behind, I believe, that growth curve. And we've gotta find a way to catch up. So I don't think there's anything weird about it. There's, uh, plenty of C's around us who have gone through this process and it's just really a growing pain.
Yeah. Might ask you an easy one. You've, you've, you've handled the harder ones. Uh, I, I was asking kinda every candidate about this, just cause I get curious, like, like if you've got, if you've got a free hour or something in Trustful, what, what, what are you doing?
No, that's the hardest questions I've had, cause that really puts me on the spot, Gary. Uh, you know, I, I've got probably multiple answers to that question, cause, um, uh, you know, I love the food in Trustful. We've got some amazing restaurants. So my wife and I are always, uh, visiting those restaurants and, and, you know, eating the good food here, but I, I would say most of the time, you know, when I've got free time, uh, I'm either spinning down at Veterans Park, you know, uh, you know, either rucking or walking around that area. Or, um, I'm at the pickleball court. I mean, I, I love playing pickleball. Uh, I'm at the covered courts, I'm at the outdoor courts in the mall. Uh, so that is something that, uh, I've picked up. Me and my son play an awful lot of pickleball together. And, but it's, it's been, it's such a great sport, but it's such a, a great social sport. I've met so many, you know, this, interesting individuals and, and, you know, wonderful people being on the courts, playing, playing pickleball with them. Uh, you know, both from, from our city and, and you'd be surprised how many people travel to play in Trustful. Uh, which is a great thing for our city. So, so yeah, I spend, you know, those, those, I'm either eating or playing pickleball probably, probably the two things I would stay there, but, but usually that's what I do with my hour. I would say those two, one of those two things generally.
Is, is, that's what scares me about pickleball. So I have not played yet. But that's kind of what scares me is like, it looks so addicting. And it seems like once people start, it's really hard for them to stop and I don't need a new obsession. Is it that addicting?
It, it can be, you know, I, I think once you, uh, you will definitely reach a point, you know, where, hey, this is really fun and, and you, you start, I, you know, for me, I've got sort of an analytical mind, so I start getting into the, the, the small details of it and the angles and, you know, how you serve and, and, you know, sort of the strategy behind it. But, but yeah, it can be, become really addicting, but I, I know I'd say equally addicting is just, I love being with my friends, you know, we have a lot, we have a huge group that plays. I mean, sometimes we'll have, you know, twelve to sixteen people show up. We have a, a very big, uh, text group going and, and we, we all like, who's playing tonight? And we'll, we'll be out there and play and just have a great time. So the, the game itself is fun, Gary, but, but being around, you know, your friends and people in the community, and meet them, it just makes it so much more fun. So, uh, I'm usually out there Sunday, Monday or Tuesday nights. So you need to come out, you know, let me know and come out there. I'll play with you.
Okay.
I got extra paddles with your name on it. So come out there.
There we go. I'm so glad that those covered courts ended up, in the sports complex too, as opposed to where it was originally. That's where I go back to some communication and transparency, cause that wasn't it, but.
No, it, it wasn't. And I, I was playing a lot of disc golf at that time, so that wasn't it.
That was not it. And luckily, it prevailed the way it should have.
Turned out really well, boy.
It turned out really well. Uh, how do people kinda follow along? We'll, we'll wrap with this. How, how do people kinda, follow along what you got coming over this summer? How little sleep are you gonna get, you know?
Um, you know, I guess the best way I'm reaching out to everyone is through Facebook, obviously. So I've got a Facebook page. Um, you know, it's linked, uh, you know, back in, you've linked it already, uh, in your comments. And then I'm, I'm working to get my website live as well. So I'm, I'm literally just a week out from announcing, so I'm still trying to, to work on getting some of those channels set up. Uh, but I would say, you know, those are great, but I love meeting with people and I'm gonna have some meet and greets set up. Uh, probably just post up somewhere and say, hey, come talk to me. I wanna hear what you have to say about the city, what you, what you're looking for. Um, let's have a conversation. I think that's the, the best way to reach people and, and probably the most personal way to do it. Uh, Facebook is great. Uh, uh, and, uh, you know, it's a great tool, but it, it can't replace face-to-face meetings, but, but right now that's the best place to, to get in touch with me. Um, I'll have a website up soon. And I am planning, uh, you know, at least to get out to the community and do some meet and greets. Uh, you know, maybe invite some people to come play pickleball if they wanna come play, uh, maybe set up a local establishment and just say, hey, come have coffee with me. Uh, you know, maybe, uh, we can meet one morning and do a workout at Veterans Park down there. I, I, you know, I, I've got a lot of different things I'm thinking about right now, but just stay tuned, watch that Facebook page. Follow me on social media and, uh, that's the best way to, uh, to get in touch with me and also to see what I've got going on.
That's perfect. Awesome. Well, I appreciate you doing this, especially with, my voice being just a mess today. I don't know.
Yeah. And I, and like I said, I appreciate you taking your time and, and using your platform to, to help, the people understanding, get to know the candidates. I think that's extremely important since we have so many new ones. And just a lot going on in the city. So thank you for, for doing what you're doing with your platform. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate it too. I, I've told every candidate, I honestly can't wait to, uh, get back to talking to mostly high school football players and high school football coaches. Um, and y'all probably can't wait for that either, cause it will mean that you're done campaigning and you're, you're, you're moving forward with the next thing. So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm ready to go to work. So I'll be glad when this campaign is over, cause I'm ready to go to work. So.
Love it. Love it. Well, I appreciate you, Brian.
Hey, appreciate you, Gary. Thanks so much. Thanks for the invite and, uh, best of luck to you with your books and your podcast.
Thank you. Have a good one.
All right, you too, bud. Bye.